And Durham. I'm part of the tax committee. Nobody threw anything. I'm Paul Chase, live on Colonial Drive. And I am... I'm Paul and Durham. I'm part of the tax committee. Nobody threw anything. That's pretty good. Yeah. Yeah. And I'm very proud of all of you here. I'm very proud of this town, of the residents, obviously, the involvement that we have, our select people, budget committees. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into this. I'm appreciating this for the first time, being a state legislator. I mean, the amount of work that goes into your civic duties and responsibilities is just awesome. And I'm just, I'm happy with this process. You know, in the art of the deal, sometimes when both people walk away feeling like they lost something, probably the right answer. And this is the venue where that happens. But I just wanted to make my comments for my appreciation for what you all do here and the fact that all of our fellow residents from Durham are here to support and delegate and debate what it is that we're trying to do in our town.
Thank you, Representative Chase.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you'll be here if people want to talk to you.
Oh, yeah. Is there anything that I can do for you folks today? Anything that I...
Oh, a couple hundred million.
Yeah, a couple. I agree with that. Well, I can tell you, and it's public information, we did deliberate last week on many items of the governor's tax proposal. There is a strong resistance to removing of revenue sharing. So in likelihood, the revenue sharing is going to stay in place. I do want to point out, though, from the emphasis of what the legislature is doing, especially from the caucus that I'm on, we are really, and we are really trying to find tax reductions for our citizens, tax savings in their income tax. We want our seniors to be able to stay here, be able to afford their properties and afford where they're living and be able to retire here comfortably. And we're looking for new jobs for our youth. And the way for us to do that is we've got to create a business environment. So those are the things that we're focusing on. So as we go forward, even in the tax committee, those are the challenges that we're trying to stick to.
Thank you again. Thanks for coming. Let me just check and see. How close are we? About done?
We're done.
You're done. All right. The motion carried by a vote of 77 to 42.
Mr. Moderator.
Kevin.
Sorry. During the break, I had a chance to talk with one of our school board representatives, and they pointed out that one of the statements that we had made earlier was not quite correct and that the current proposed school budget, we had originally said did not include anything for the new high school. It actually does include the first interest-only payment of $250,000 for the high school, which over the course of the loan will save the RSU $1.2 million. So I just wanted to correct that statement that we made earlier.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Article 16, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for fire and rescue capital improvement account, the selectmen recommend $50,000 by raising that amount. The budget committee recommends $40,000 by raising that amount." I will look for a motion from the budget committee. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the recommendation of the budget committee under Article 16 and raise $40,000 for the fire and rescue capital improvement account. Discussion and comments? Deputy Chief.
Again, this is not mine, but I will represent it. You know, we've had the chief, as a full-time chief, for 12 years, and we give him the authority to run the fire department and make educated decisions. He's laid out a capital plan that extends out to 2030 right now. In order to fund that capital account, you know, at some point, you've got to put more money into it. We've got equipment that has got to be replaced. Based on the chief's plan, $50,000 is the right number to do this year.
Any other comments? Mil.
This was not a unanimous vote by the budget committee. However, the majority of the budget committee being sensitive to the increase taxes we were facing is how we came up with the number 40,000, which I believe was an increase over a previous year. It had been 40,000 at a time. It was then, it went down, and the budget committee voted to bring it back to 40,000.
Thank you, Mil. Any other comments or discussion? Chuck?
The chief puts together an excellent, excellent plan. And just like Keith said, he has this laid out, out to like 2030, okay? Telling us which piece of apparatuses we're going to change and continually down through. It is a very good estimate, and that's how I look at it, as an estimate, okay? There's nothing saying that, and Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the quint we just purchased, I believe the chief has us replacing that in 15 years. And yes, he has the dollar amounts laid out over the years that we're going to utilize. If you look back to the 2012 budget, we put $25,000 into this capital reserve account. In '13, we put $25,000 in it, and in '14, we upped it to $35,000. Yes, we've slimmed it a little bit, and when we cut the funds and we don't give the fire department exactly what, the $50,000, what that does is the apparatus that we were supposed to purchase in 2017, we may not be able to purchase it until 2018. Again, his layout is extremely detailed, and for me, again, I'm looking at this as I need to be responsible to the fire department or to the town employees, however you want to look at it, okay? Because I need to be responsible to all of them. But at the same point in time, I need to be responsible to the taxpayers of Durham. And for me, I am one of the ones that pushed for, to go down to the 40,000. I would love to sit here and give everybody everything they want. I believe when we first, the first meeting that we had, one of the selectmen sat there and said, "There's nothing to cut. I don't know why we're, there's just nothing to cut. We have nothing in this budget to cut. If we do, we're stealing from advantages to taxpayers." Even still, we still need to be responsible to those taxpayers and try to get some of these funds out of here.
Thank you, Chuck. Jeff?
Just speaking on the board of selectmen on this one, the numbers Chuck gave are correct: $25,000, $25,000, $35,000, and $40,000 this year. There was an extra amount last year that also, besides the 35, that went to approximately $5,000 left over from the operating budget. This year, there was, I believe, $18 left over in the operating budget. So looking ahead, the board of selectmen felt that going to the recommended 50,000 would be prudent in the long run. The more you, more you can put ahead, you can save interest eventually by making a payment early and things like that. So we felt that the 50,000 was reasonable. Almost every year, they come with a number. We typically cut it, I believe, I believe three years ago, it was 40,000, and we went to 25, as far as what the request was. And this year, we actually went along with the request from the chief.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion on Article 16, which is to approve the recommendation of the budget committee and raise $40,000 for the fire and rescue capital improvement account. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 17, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for fire and rescue capital improvement projects, both the selectmen and budget committee recommend that the sum of $3,000 be transferred from the fire capital improvement fund." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 17 that we pass. The article is written. Comments or discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to let you know what the chief's request was here. We had requested $12,000 from the capital account, A, to paint the station outside, which is in drastic need of, which was about $7,000, and to replace the trim around the doors and in the bays, I believe it was about $3,000, and to do some work on the hood in the kitchen. This $3,000 here, if I'm not mistaken, represents security cameras, Jeff?
And I believe the hood.
And the hood?
Yes.
Okay. So his original request was $12,000, which is money that's in our capital improvement account. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Jeff?
To explain the reasons for cutting on that one, there was some debate this year as to what constitutes a capital project. In the past, we have included painting and things like the trim and so on, and there was a debate among the board, and it was decided that that really isn't, painting really isn't a capital project and that it should be a maintenance project. And that's why the, why we put the number where we did.
Deputy Chief? Yes, sir. Yeah.
So with that said, we should have raised our budget by $7,000 in raised tax money rather than taking that out of capital improvement, capital improvements account? Is that what you're saying? Painting needs to go in the budget, which would be raised?
I believe that's what the board was suggesting.
I just did a paint renovation in my store in Brunswick, which cost me about $8,000. That was a capital account project. I don't understand why a $7,000 paint would not be considered capital improvement.
Okay. I think that's a tax and accounting issue we'll let the selectmen and the fire department resolve before next year as to where painting goes. Yes, sir.
Did we not just do a $1,500 floor at the Eureka Center out of a capital account?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand.
The floor at the Eureka Center for $1,500 was out of a capital account. You're talking $7,000 in painting is not a capital account. There seems to be an inconsistency there.
All right. Thank you. I think we're getting into the niceties of the IRS code, and I don't think we want to spend the day trying to figure that one out. But I understand the issue and the importance to the departments when they're budgeting. They really need to know how the selectmen and budget committee are going to view certain items for purposes of their budget presentation. Is there any other discussion or comments on Article 17 in the motion before you, which is to transfer $3,000 from the fire capital improvement fund for the fire and rescue capital improvement projects? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 18, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the annual loan payment for the fire station, payment four of five under a refinancing agreement, both the selectmen and budget committee recommend the sum of $39,510 to be transferred from the fire capital improvement fund." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 18 as written. Any comments or questions or concerns about that article in the motion before you? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 19, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the annual bond payment for the Quint Ladder Truck, payment two of six, both the selectmen and the budget committee recommend that you transfer $33,004 from the fire capital improvement fund." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 19 that we pass the article as written. Comments and discussion? Yes, sir.
Again, the decision was made to make a $33,000 payment based over a six-year payback. The chief's recommendation was actually to make a $40,000 payment this year, which would create three $40,000 payments and then one $31,000 payment in 2018, which actually would save the town $1,417.59 over the course of the loan based on paying it off early. That was his recommendation. Thank you. Jeff?
When the budget committee was, I mean, when the selectmen were looking at this, we chose to go with the actual payment amount. With the bond that we got, the actual amount was $33,004. And the reason being was the difference between the budget committee and selectmen's recommendation in Article 16, that $10,000, if that, where that didn't, where that didn't pass, and we were planning that it may not, we kept with the lower payment to keep our bottom line and the capital fund more fluid. And I believe, and I believe, Selectman Hall said the same thing I had, in my recollection. His original, the chief's original request was a $33,004, and we were, in discussing it with the board of selectmen, we had wondered about doing 40,000. And it was...
Can you get closer to the mic, really close? No, we still can't hear you.
The chief had recommended the 40,000 if the capital account was funded at the full $50,000 that he recommended. When that was reduced, he then said that we should probably make the $33,000 payment to reflect that offset, that reduction in the amount of funds that were going into the capital projects account.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about Article 19 in the motion before you? Yes, ma'am. You don't have to run.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question about the quint that we're paying for? How much under budget did that end up coming in from when we had, we had projected it out?
Jeff, do you know? Or Deputy Chief?
We originally requested $210,000. We ended up with a principal cost of $183, $236, $42, as being the actual cost of the quint plus interest.
So about $26,000 less, I believe.
Okay. So my point is, when we were projecting out over our 10-year plan, we should have that extra money still sitting in the capital reserve?
Yes, that money will be able to...
Right. But I'm just justifying in my head that we really didn't do a disservice at this point because they're asking for 50,000, and they still have 26 from a year ago that is rolling forward. So I feel good about that.
Thank you. Representative?
Paul Chase, Colonial Drive. So is this a fixed interest rate bond, or is there any implications to this bond over the future if interest rates go up over the next year?
Fixed. Thank you.
The answer was fixed. It's at a fixed rate. Yes, ma'am. Get close to the mic now, and don't talk quite so fast as you could listen.
Sorry. Michelle Richardson, Patriot Way. My understanding is, is we approved them to borrow up to $210,000. They borrowed 186 based on what we were able to get in the market. The difference doesn't, isn't sitting in an account. We didn't borrow it. It's a bond, right? So it's just, we borrowed less, which over time will save us money, but it's not like there's money in the capital account.
That's why our payments, our payments, $33,000 instead of $40,000.
Versus what we thought it was going to be. All right. Thank you.
I think you misunderstood what I was saying. I was talking about the rolling capital improvement forecast that the chief has, where we're constantly putting extra money into it based on what the projected cost of these items to be replaced would need to be. So I wasn't talking about actual payments.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else from anyone else on Article 17 and, I'm sorry, Article 19 and the motion before you, which is to transfer $33,004 from the fire capital improvement fund for the annual bond payment for the Quint Ladder Truck? All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 20, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for general assistance, both the selectmen and budget committee recommend that you raise the sum of $5,000." Any comments or questions about that article and a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass. Article 20 is written. Any comments on the article and the motion and the amount that's recommended? Yes, ma'am.
Jill Gaston Gay, what do we do with the general assistance money?
Jeff?
General assistance is a state-required program that we do. It helps individuals who don't have income or very little income. I believe it's needs-based, and they will come to our general assistance officer, who is our administrator, and will fill out, fill out forms, and based on that, they may or may not receive funds to help them with things like rent and...
Food.
Food and things like that. Yeah. It's short-term. It's reimbursed from the state at 50% at this time, and it's something that we have to put in, and we have to pay whether we put in the, if we do more than 5,000, we still have to pay it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion before you under Article 20, which is to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for general assistance. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 21, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the Historical Society for the Restoration of the Union Church, both the selectmen and budget committee recommend the sum of $0." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 21 that you raise and appropriate $0 for the Historical Society for Restoration of the Union Church. Jeff?
It seems funny to put in a $0 article, but we put that in there in case members of the Historic Society were able to get some numbers or wanted to put another motion on the floor. They had to ask for $10,000. We still don't have a really good plan on what they want to do, and for the past several years, we haven't put any money in. So we just put this as a placeholder to allow them the opportunity.
Thank you. And is there anyone here who wants to address that from the Historical Society? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion before you, which is to, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I'm not technically a member of the Historical Society. We are in the process of working with our preservation specialists to put together a master plan for the Union Church. We just haven't gotten anything back from them yet, so we decided to wait before allocating funds to, at their request, we decided to wait till next year after we have more information and we have a better plan together.
Thank you. All right. I'll call for a vote on the motion before you under Article 21, which is to raise and appropriate $0 for the Historical Society for the Restoration of the Union Church. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article 22, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for parks and recreation, both the selectmen and budget committee recommend the sum of $12,907 by transferring that amount from the designated fund balance from State Park fees and the Recreation Fund." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 22 that we pass. The article is written. Comments, discussion, questions? Jeff?
One of the things that we did increase in this budget this year was we put in more money for the War Memorial Park over at Southwest Bend. We have had a Boy Scout come forward with some ideas of how to improve that, including new flagpoles because the ones that are there look pretty, pretty bad, possibility of a path to the gazebo and some other things. So we put in some money this year for that project to help along the way. The Boy Scout will also be doing some fundraising efforts as well to help defray some of the costs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 22 and the motion before you, which is to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,907 by transferring that amount from the designated fund balance for State Park, from State Park, for State Park fees and Recreation Fund for Parks and Recreation? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 23, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for the Planning Board and Appeals Board, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the sum of $14,190 by transferring $750 from the designated fund balance from application fees for Planning Board and Appeals Board hearings and raising the sum of $13,440. May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 23 that we pass the article as written. Jeff?
On this line, we do have some increases. We increased the salary, or we put more money in for the salaries for the Planning Boards and Appeals. They get paid $50 a meeting and the chair gets paid 100 for the meeting. What we did not know at the time, but there is, there is an active appeal now, so the Appeals Board will have to meet. They haven't had to meet for a while. We also added in $5,000 for ordinance review. It's become very clear to us that our ordinances need some help. The thought is to contract with someone to help us with this review, whether it be something like GP COG, which is the Greater Portland Council of Government, offer these services, or to contract with an individual that knows ordinances and can help us. We tried to do this several years ago with AVCOG and got very little results from what we spent. And we were very disappointed with what we got. But it is a definite need to have our ordinance reviewed because they can conflict sometimes, they're not clear at times, and so that's why we're asking for that amount there.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments or questions or concerns about Article 23 and the motion before you? Yes, ma'am.
How come there's a new line for the Planning Board Secretary? Didn't we always have one?
I don't believe we passed anything for the Planning Board, Harry. Is it under administrative fees?
I believe that had been under administration before.
But not today.
Because we always paid someone.
Yeah.
I remember there being an argument about the pay.
Yeah, I believe that was under administration and we moved it.
So the administration line should have been lower?
Yes, Jane. Administration came down. They moved a lot of that stuff around. Secretaries, if you look through, you'll see that they're secreting in most of the specific pieces. And they started doing that last year.
So last year it moved, so how come it didn't show up last year?
Not all of them, they started. Last year, the secretary for, I'm not going to pull it off the top of my head.
Okay, yeah, whatever. For different meetings.
But whatever committee, they started moving them to the committees, to the specific committees and putting funds in those.
Okay, but I just don't see a, yep, I beg your pardon, I do see a decrease up there.
Okay, thanks. Debbie?
Deplarabee Hollowell Road. Last year I got done as Planning Board Secretary, excuse me, and they did do a condensment of the secretaries now. There's no separation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions about Article 23 and the motion before you, which is to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,190 for the Planning Board and Board of Appeals? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article 24, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for Public Works, the Selectmen recommend the sum of $1,031,798. The Budget Committee recommends the sum of $1,027,198. I'll look for a motion from the Selectmen. It's been moved and, is there a second on the Board of Selectmen? It's been moved and seconded by the Board of Selectmen that we raise and appropriate the sum of $1,031,798 for Public Works by transferring $785,314 from designated fund balance from the URIP and Auto Xize Funds and raising the amount of $246,484. Jeff?
I'd like to, as part of the information, there was a sheet out back labeled Public Works Budget versus Roads Budget with Snow Plow Contract. And what I was, what we were trying to do here is show what would, what would our budgets would be at if we continued with a snow plow contract, assuming that the snow plow contract increased 5% a year, which the last couple of years of the contract had actually increased by 6% and that the roads budget would increase by about 1%. And you can see for 2014, if we were still on the snow plow contract, it would have been about $1,293,958. And for our budget, what we actually budgeted last year was $1,180,149. We budgeted low last year, knowing it was our first year, and that's one of the reasons why you see a fairly large increase this year on our requested. In 2015, if we had extended out the winter plow contract, we would have been about $1,335,573. And we're requesting $1,264,442. The difference between our 2013 budget and this year's budget is about $15,000. So that represents maybe about a 12 or 13%, I'm sorry, a 1.2, 1.3% increase over the last two years in our roads budget. And so we were just trying to put that out there to show that where we would have been if we continued on with the plow contract, assuming the plow contract continued to increase at the same rate or a slightly lower rate than it was.
Thank you. Chuck?
Before we get into this, I just want to tip my hat to Sean and his crew because I think they did an excellent job at taking care of the roads this winter with the sun removal and everything. For their first time going out there and learning the roads and all the different things, I just, I want to thank you and your crew because I think you did a fabulous job.
Any comments, questions, or discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to bring up, I didn't know until I become a Selectman that we share our crew with Dibb and Pownal. That means that your tax dollar labor is going over in Pownal and working over there along with our equipment, our new equipment. Me being a new Selectman, we're coming up with a new contract with the Road Commissioner with Pownal, and this is going to be coming up. If anybody can email me, give me your thought, it'd be greatly appreciated. I am not in favor of it. We've got a lot of work in Durham and I think the tax, God, all of us should stay in Durham and work hard in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, Bill D'Onn again, from Plummer Mill Road. So I'm seeing a couple of things that I've got questions on in the Public Works Budget. I'm seeing other places where fuel accounts are going, are being reduced, and I'm seeing the fuel account for Public Works going up considerably. So can somebody educate me on that?
One of the main reasons the fuel accounts going up this year is because last year, we were based on about a six, seven-month budget because we didn't start doing until somewhere around May or June.
Okay, and that's the same answer then for equipment maintenance?
Yeah, that would be...
Okay. Then my last question will be, so we see what's budgeted for 2015 for winter roads and actually it goes back to the labor. So the money that the town's getting back as a result of the emergency declaration, where does that money go back to? So Public Works and the chief did all the work to get, to work with the county EMA to get the figures in for the declaration, which was just announced that we, and the chief attended a meeting on Monday with FEMA to get the, you know, the paperwork started for the reimbursement, right? So I'm wondering about who, about where that money goes back to when we get it?
I believe as long as we get it back in the same budget year, we can credit it to the, to the budget, so the budget lines that were affected, so however much the, that they're reimbursing us for what was affected on the fire line would go to the...
Right, but it's mostly public work. It's mostly public works.
And so, and anything that was being credited back due to work by the Public Works would go to credit that line.
Okay, and so for those of you that don't know, the declaration that you might have seen in the news and the fact that Andersgagen and Cumberland and York County is getting some money back from the federal government because of the blizzard, there was a, there's a whole convoluted process that goes into collecting all the costs for road salt and labor and all that stuff that happened during that blizzard so that we could get around. The person that everybody wanted to poke sticks at earlier was the person who did the vast majority of that work to get that package together so that our town, so that the Public Works, mostly the Public Works budget doesn't get completely blown out of the water next year, just so you know, but probably didn't know before now. So, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Richardson, Patriot Way. Some of my questions are answered by, my first question was, how much of a budget did we have? How many months were we budgeting for last year? Explains a lot of the increases. And maybe this goes back to what you said earlier about sharing with Pownal, but I'm interested in the reduction in the Road Commissioner's salary by 26% for next year. I know we've had a transition from our existing Road Commissioner and I think we're in the market for a new one. Is it just a timing issue that the interim...
No. It's actually, Durham is, up to this point, Pownal has been the employer and Durham has been contracting the services, so that was all in one line. With hiring the new Road Commissioner, it's been decided that Durham will hire the Road Commissioner and Pownal will contract. We are splitting it out now. There's a Road Commissioner's salary and then all the FICA Medicare and health insurance lines are included in that. So it's in more than one line now. We tried to keep, keep as close to, fairly close to last year, there is, there is actually, if you add all the lines up where things are included, if down the Road Commissioner and you see M-PERS, Medicare, that's some of those lines in there.
Okay. So is there income, is there somewhere else an offset to income coming in from Pownal or is this just our portion?
This is just our portion. We're calculating on a 60% of it and so we'll expend and then offset by the income coming in. So as far as the numbers that you see, that part of it will be offset by the Pownal money coming in.
Okay, so what last year was 43,144, this year is 33,300 plus 1378, 486, 10, 606, 3240? That's the equivalent year-to-year comparison? Basically, the Road Commissioner benefits plus the salary? Is that right?
I believe so.
Can you get closer to the mic then?
We're still in the hiring, we're still in the hiring process, so we used historical figures, but those are not set in stone at this time.
So actually, it is, it is a projected increase over last year when you add up all those things.
Yes, and I believe that was the difference between the committees' recommendation and the Board of Selectmen's recommendation.
That was my next question is, on a million-dollar budget, you couldn't come to 4,700 bucks? I think that was everything I had. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious to know why we have a contract out for mowing. Shouldn't that be under Public Works? We have a contract bid out for it.
We, we're doing a one-year contract so that we can look at the feasibility. We do not have a mower at this point. We would have to purchase a mower, so we need to look at how fast we get a return on investment in a mower. So that's why we're doing the one more year. We don't act, our Road Commissioner resigned. We have just an interim one right now and we're looking to hire one, so rather than make that decision without all the facts, we are delaying it one year and that's one of the things we'll be looking at.
Okay. And if the budget last year reflected six months, so you're doubling it, why is our gas price tripling?
Well, the VA, it was about six months. So where are you looking at?
Under Public Works, where it says fuel account. We spent $24,000 last year. We're now asking for $70,000 in theory because we have six more months to be on the roads. Just kind of curious to know where they're driving.
Last year, as we said, the roads were, the trucks were only on the roads from about May. We had two winter months during that time. We were looking at our fuel consumption, when we calculated this, we were looking at our fuel consumption of some of our big winter months this year. And that's, I believe we went with four and a half months of winter and seven and a half months of summer in our calculations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Charlie Sherburne, Wyers Hill Road. And I noticed that under winter roads, we are buying less sand and considerably more salt. And my concern is that when you put salt on the ground, you inevitably wind up drinking it from your well. So I'd like to know what the consideration is, other than the fact that salt works well in the winter.
The reality is, on that particular line is, again, we were working off an eight-month budget last year, and when we budgeted for our salt, we only leaned on the earlier part of the season. And basically, ultimately, we're using less salt than we have historically. I don't think I answered your question, though. Yeah, we are using less than historically. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Chuck?
Your question about what the $4,000 difference was, for the most part, by my notes, okay, we're different in the utilities, electricity and heat. We felt, we took some funds out of that. And also on facilities maintenance, we took funds out of that. And we took some funds out of safety equipment. And we also took some funds out of uniforms. Now, what everyone needs to understand is, as we go down through this, unless it is salaries and benefits, we can make recommendations on specific lines that they want to spend on, okay? We can make recommendations. Whether they spend it on that, it does not matter. We are approving an overall budget. And if we approve the budget for $30,000 and they want to spend $15,000 on this, we can do that. You know, this is just, it's just a line item here and all we're doing is voting on the overall budget with the exception of salaries and benefits.
Thank you, Chuck. Yes, ma'am.
I see under the benefits, and I know that they're newly lined out this year apparently, the main pirs, but then when I go back and I look at the administrative expenses, the main pirs line went up 2,600, well, FICA and main pirs, and so did it also on the Fire Department line. So did I miss something? Are we paying main pirs to people that weren't previously getting it or...
So for many years longer than we really know, it's been at least a decade, probably more than two, maybe more than two decades, we have had a credit at the main pirs and our credit ran out last year, so we had to start paying last year. And this is our first full year of paying the main pirs amount.
Okay.
Which is the retirement system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Bill?
To address the resident's question about $4,600 is all we could find and just to speak on Chuck's breakdown, at one time, we had looked at reductions of $13,100, but I couldn't get a vote passed amongst the Budget Committee. There was quite a bit of discussion as to what were appropriate cuts and what weren't. The, we were able to get a five to four vote for the $4,600 reduction. At least half of that came out of the heat and electricity line based on prices being considerably lower than what we were anticipating and anticipating that even though they may go up, they won't go up to what they were a year ago. So $4,600 was the best we could do with our discussion. There are areas to cut, but your Budget Committee felt this was the most favored way.
Just going through the Public Works budget this year was...
cut, but your Budget Committee felt this was the most favored way.
Just going through the Public Works budget this year was a bit like trying to nail Jell-O to the wall, quite frankly. It was, keep in mind that we're trying to establish a base year here. There's a lot of moving parts. You know, we have a partial budget, because we still have part of the old plowing contract in here. We also have things moving from the administrative article into the Public Works article. So the budget that we're doing right now is really the year-one, based, fully in place, 12-month Public Works budget. So I think when we get to next year's cycle, when we actually have really good, solid, what we actually spend over 12 months, and what we can expect to spend on the next 12 months, and compare the two, I think we'll probably be able to, you know, go through it with a little bit finer tooth comb.
Thank you. Mark?
I'd like to comment on the sharing of the road commissioner and services. We, it does appear to be that sharing the road commissioner is a cost savings. I'm not so sure that we could hire a full-time road commissioner in Durham for what we're paying our percentage for. And when it comes to sharing other amenities, Pownell has a machine for crack sealing. We don't have a machine. So we could walk and rent one and buy the crack seal, or we can use theirs. We buy the crack seal, put the two crews together, and they seem to be able to do a good job and get it done. This last year, they tried putting up the sand and salt together, and they cut the time, I can't remember exactly, but it was almost in half, I think. Both towns getting together and putting up all the sand at the same time. I think that's probably the only time that I can remember that our equipment went over there, other than their excavator was broken down once. Ours was available in case they needed it, so that they wouldn't have to go out and rent one. But there is a lot of cost sharings involved with the two towns, and if you look around at some of these smaller towns like ours, I think you're going to find that they're all looking at doing some of the same thing, because they can't all afford to go out and buy a grader. We don't have one. We don't need a $300,000 grader for six or seven miles of road. So we use Pownell's with their operator. Their operator and their grader comes over, they pay for it, and at the end of the year, actually, three times a year, we sit down with the Pownell stuff, go over the budget and see where we are. Sometimes that budget has been, the last couple that I've seen, within $400, $500 of what little bit we've swapped for. So there is a cost savings in sharing. I think that we should keep doing that.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, ma'am.
Wendy Stewart, Hollowell Road. I'm a little confused. So if our men go to Pownell and work, how is that time accounted for?
We keep track of all labor hours and equipment hours that are swapped back and forth, and we keep a spreadsheet, and it basically shows the final balance as far as, did Pownell use more, did Durham use more, and at the end of each fiscal year, if there's much of a gap, we make one town or the other spend difference as a check. But we do keep track of it.
The only thing we haven't figured out yet, if someone gets hurt over there, one of our guys got hurt over in Pownell, heavens forbid, gets a chainsaw across the leg or something. Who's going to pay for his workman's comp? Who's going to pay for him being out? Who's going to pay for his replacement if he got hurt over in Pownell when he worked for Durham? That hasn't been worked out yet. We're still in the, we're still in the middle of this. That's why it's so important if someone can, if you guys have a comment on this, let us know, email, because we're right in the mix of getting into this with this new road commissioner and ironing all that out.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns, or discussion on Article 24 and the motion before you, which is to follow the recommendation of the Selectmen and raise and appropriate the sum of $1,031,798 for public, yes, sir.
I'd love to hear what the plans are for paving, speaking of the roads and everything else. It looks like there's an investment in paving for $225,000 this year. What is the project's plan?
Jeff?
The, the plan was, I believe, for a portion of Quaker Meeting House Road, and actually, yeah.
Obviously, things can change now. It's not my responsibility for the plan, but what I had planned on this year for paving was to do a heavy shim and overlay on the remainder of Meeting House Road from Route 136 into the pavement change by Old Brunswick Road. It's not the ultimate treatment for that road. It's really too far gone for shim and overlay, but we're in such a state of disrepair with all of our roads in town that we have to do something. So I chose that road as a heavier traveled route to go in and do a shim and overlay.
And we do not have any major road reconstructions included in this. Those would probably, because of the cost, would have to come to you as a bond issue. I think we're, you're talking somewhere between 700 and a million dollars a mile, 700,000 to a million?
Yeah, depending on what we found with base conditions, but you're going to be between 500,000 and 700,000 a mile.
Okay, 500,000 to 700,000.
Give or take. About $100 a linear foot for a reconstruction.
And we have so, we have so many roads that are at that rate, at that state of disrepair. We're trying, we're still trying to get our heads around how we're going to do this, because it's got to be a bond, but it's, it's going to hit, hit the taxes. There's no way that it can't hit the taxes if we try to repair these. And so we're still trying to figure out how we're going to do it.
Thank you, Chuck. Yes, sir.
You mentioned plans of fixing roads, et cetera. I don't know if this is state responsibility or the town responsibility, but over the years, people have been talking about the sharp curve that dumps into the swamp road from Lyerbrook Road. Has the town looked at that all, been planning to at all?
It's a state responsibility, and we have sent, in the past, I don't know that we've sent anything super, but we've sent requests for them to look at it. They've looked at it, haven't been able to come up, they haven't come up with anything, or haven't been willing to spend any money on it anyway, up to this point. But it is a state responsibility because of Route 9 being the major road there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? I think so, but if there are other comments or concerns, bring them forward. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion before you under Article 24, which is to raise and appropriate $1,031,798 for Public Works. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 25, I will note that 25, 26, and 27 all deal with the proposed Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, but we're going to take Article, we're going to take them up separately, because Article 25 will determine whether we need to take action on Articles 26 and 27 or not. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to create a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. Motion. It's been moved and seconded under Article 25, that the town vote to create a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. Jeff?
So we are asking to create this, looking to the future, road repair, road reconstruction, equipment for Public Works. We'd like to start setting some money aside to help, just like with the fire department, help even out the tax burden, so you don't see spikes, as high as spikes from these budgets. So that's why we're asking to create this account.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 26 and the motion before you, which is to create a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to automatically transfer all unexpended Public Works operating funds as of year-end into the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded under Article 26, that we pass the article as written. Comments and discussion? Jeff?
This is similar to the way the fire department budget works at this point. If there are monies left over in the fire department operating budget, they get transferred to the fire department capital reserve fund. And this was something that was requested and is being recommended by both boards, that we do the same thing with the Public Works lines.
Kevin?
This was a good pointed discussion in our meetings. I wholeheartedly support a public reserve fund for Public Works, but I don't support having operational fund balances automatically transferred into that department's capital reserve. I think that that discretion should remain with the Board of Selectmen every year, because quite frankly, you never know what's going to happen. The example we were using was, there's, at some point, there's probably going to need to be a roof upgrade or update to the town hall. And so if we, if there's, let's say there's $10,000 or $20,000 left over and operating from Public Works that we've said has to go in the Public Works Capital Improvement Fund, then that money is not available to maybe fix a roof in particular year if we need to. So while I support regular contributions to the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, I don't think we should make it an automatic thing that it happens that way.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other discussion or comments on Article 26 and the motion before you, which is to automatically transfer all unexpended Public Works operating funds as of year-end into the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. All those opposed, motion fails. You want to, you want to stand? All right. There's, there's six others, other than Mr. Simon, who want to see how that vote went. And there are six other people that are, that question the count. There's two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. We'll, we'll do a standing count on Article 26 and the motion before you, which is to automatically transfer all unexpended Public Works operating funds as of year-end into the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. All those in favor of the motion, stand, and please remain standing until counted. Where'd my other counter go? You might be right, Mr. Simon. What did you get? Well, you're right, Bill. All right. Mr. Simon has pointed out to the moderator that he needs to get his glasses checked. However, the vote was 43 to 40. I'm going to call for a written ballot on it. Because I, what, what happens is some people are not comfortable with the standing vote, and so I want everyone to vote, and then we'll get an accurate count. Not, I'm not, I'm not trying to one-up Milt Simon. So we'll put the ballot box out, we'll funnel around. It shouldn't take too long. Annual bond payment for the Public Works Equipment Bond, payment one of 10. Both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend that we raise the sum of $141,524. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded under Article 28, that we pass the article as written. Comments, concerns, or discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Richardson, still on Patriot Way. Similar to her question earlier about the quint that we bought, I'm curious what the actual equipment costs ended up being versus what we had approved at prior town meetings. If that's something anybody knows, then get back to me.
All right. Does somebody have an answer for that? As I understood, you wanted to know the difference between what was approved and what was actually spent for equipment? All right. We do not have an answer to that. We'll try to come up with it, and if we do, we'll, if we do, we will announce it when we get it. Any other questions or concerns about Article 28 and the motion before you to raise and appropriate $141,524 for the payment on the Public Works Equipment Bond?
This has already been decided, and we're just paying the bill, correct? Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed. Article 29, see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for the annual bond payment for the Public Works Building Bond, payment one of 10. Both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend that we raise and appropriate the sum of $91,120. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded under Article 29, that we pass the article as written. Any questions, discussion, or concerns? Jeff?
Speaking back to the other, the other question, we were approved 1.413 million dollars, and we spent 1.150 million, so approximately $250,000 less.
That was to address the lady's question about the difference between equipment purchases and how much was appropriate.
And in that, we actually purchased one more piece of equipment than we had originally put out for.
All right. So that was the comment on Article 28. Any comments or concerns about Article 29 and the motion before you, which is to raise and appropriate $91,120 for the first of 10 payments on the Public Works Building Bond? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 30, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for solid waste, the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend that we raise and appropriate $191,825 by transferring $14,308 from the designated fund balance from the solid waste tag fees, and raising $177,517. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded under Article 30, that we pass the article as written. Comments and discussions about Article 30 and that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Are we done with the count? All right, we are now returning to Article 26, which, in the motion before you, which was to automatically transfer all unexpended Public Works operating funds as of year-end into the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. That motion passes 51 to 41. That motion passes 51 to 41. How many times did you vote, Milt? Thank you for that correction. I have promised to get my glasses fixed before next year. And bring my hearing aids. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to appropriate all excess public works roads operating budget funds from the calendar year 2014 and transfer these funds to the newly created public works capital reserve fund. May I have a motion, please? I'm sorry. Both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend that the $96,466 in the excess from the operating budget be transferred from undesignated fund balance to the newly created public works capital reserve fund. May I have a motion for it? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 27 as written. Any discussion or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Are you guys positive you didn't assign it somewhere else already, though?
Yes.
Okay.
This is actually the only recommendation, other than the two supplemental articles at the beginning, that we took any money out of the undesignated fund, because we are still trying to build that back up.
Any other comments or concerns about Article 27 in the motion before you? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 31. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for telecommunications, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend that you raise and appropriate the sum of $28,659 by transferring that amount from the designated fund balance created by franchise fees. May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 31 as written. Any comments or discussions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 32, which under state law also requires a written ballot. To see if the town will vote to increase the maximum property tax levy limit established by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved at this town meeting results in a tax commitment in excess of the maximum property tax levy otherwise allowable. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 32 as written and authorize an increase in the maximum property tax levy limit established by state law in the event that the municipal budget results in a tax commitment in excess of that amount. Any comments or concerns, discussion? Yes, sir.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Is this strictly the town of Durham budget, or does this include the RSU budget with the town of Durham?
I don't believe that's a question we have an answer to at this point.
The question is whether the school levies needs to be considered in addition to the levy for the municipal budget.
The wording of the article actually says, "In the event the municipal budget approved at this town meeting results in a tax commitment in excess of the maximum." So it sounds like it...
It would not include RSU 5, because those amounts are not in this budget. This just applies to these articles that are before us today. The budget for the RSU set it. Those budget meetings and the referendum. Any other comments? Terry?
What happens if we vote this down?
If, I believe if we vote this down, we, if our tax levy exceeds the maximum, we will only be able to levy up to the maximum, so we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to fund everything that was voted at this meeting, basically. I have no idea what the limit is, though.
Yes, sir.
Neil Berry, Stackpole Road. You don't know what the limit is? I didn't even know there was a tax law like this on the statute.
This is, yeah, this is one of those annual items that are in the annual articles, and I do not know what the actual maximum is.
So why is it on the warrant? Why is this on the warrant?
It's state law. It has to be on the warrant. We have to, we have to have this on there, or we would be limited. If what was voted on the town floor exceeded that, whatever that limit was, we couldn't levy any, any higher taxes.
But we don't know what that limit is.
I, I do not.
So just generally speaking, if you've lived a while and paid taxes for a while, you will know there is an insatiable appetite for more of our money in government. I don't know what this limit is, but I'm in favor of it. I suspect it's probably so high it's irrelevant in this case, but it would be nice to know, and I would be in favor of keeping whatever limit we have in place.
It's not high. It's not a high limit. That's why it's in here. We cross that barrier every year, and I'm not going to say, I want to say it's around 3%. It's not high at all. And again, for, ever since this has been in, every year, we cross that limit with our taxes.
I think you could get the actual data from May Municipal Association, but my last look at that was that it was that almost every community in the state exceeds the limit that's established by the state legislature. They have the authority to do that.
I wasn't here last year. This was, this was on last year's warrant? Because I don't remember it the year before.
It was, it was on in slightly different wording.
And it passed last year?
It passed last, it's passed every year since I've been on the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I'm, citizens of the town of Durham, I would just encourage you not to vote in favor of this. There is no way we should be giving them more money than we absolutely have to. It'd be nice to get some more detail on what this is all about, and I guess that's my responsibility. I'll do so then.
If this is voted down, and we have to stay within the state limit, and as we leave today, we don't know what the state limit is or what the town limit is going to be, and finds out that the town limit is above the state limit, does that mean we got to call another town meeting to redo the budget?
I would say, I would say there would be very little other recourse, because they would have to make such substantial changes among the different department allocations that I, I believe they would certainly have to go back to the people to make those decisions.
And did someone say that, as far as they know, every year, we have voted for this, and every year, we've been above the state limit? Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
Robert Whitmore from Pingham Brook Road. I can understand wanting to put a cap on the budget by the state, okay? And I can understand the town's position on if we go over that cap. But we can't sit here and tell them, okay, we're going to go over the state cap, you can do what we want. If you're going to do something like that, we need to put in here a cap that the town can go to. Because I don't want, I don't know about anybody else here, but I don't want my taxes jumping another 62%, like my property taxes did over the last two years. My property taxes went from $1,100 to $1,800 in two years. When you do the math, that's 62% in two years. Now, I don't know about anybody else's property taxes, and I don't know about anybody else's community, but we need to set a cap on what they can do for as far as the property taxes go.
Who wants to speak to that? Jeff?
Really, your cap is what you vote on, on each line. You, you vote each line in, and if you're going to do a cap, you figure you, you vote something less.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think, you know, the cap that we're setting is, is what we're voting on today. I mean, you want to control the spending. That's what we've done today by voting up and down all of these articles. So really, this seems like it's almost a moot point at this point. You know, we either approve this, or we should have, I would suggest to the Budget Committee or the Selectmen going forward, we know what that number is, so we actually can make an informed vote, because it's hard to say. I mean, maybe it's we blow it out of the water every year, and we should know that, that, you know, maybe this should be the first thing we vote on before we vote on everything else, because it's kind of a waste of time if we're not going to approve it at this point, right?
Also, I just looked at the state statute. It's not a set percentage, like 5% or 6%. It's a calculation where you take the previous year's growth limit or previous year's levy limit, you add one, you factor in the state determined growth limits based on your state valuations. It's a moving target rather than just a specific percentage.
And I'm guessing, you know, similar to the way that state works on other things, we don't actually know that number yet, right? I mean, have they calculated? They probably haven't even calculated it yet. So, I mean, I think while it would be good to know what the number, or at least have a sense, to your point, do we blow it out of the water every year? Okay, well, we should know that ahead of time before we're, and I would, my political comment on this is it seems sort of interesting that the state wants to put tax levy limits on, yet start, you know, cost sharing down to the municipal level. It really doesn't jive for consistency, but that's the state.
Thank you. Charlie?
Charlie Cattell, Rabbit Road. I'd rather vote, vote on this in a yes manner now, when we have, according to the last vote, 90-plus people than have to come back to another town meeting when we would have even less than that.
Thank you. Kevin?
I, I agree with people when they say they want to understand this, this limit better. This question was on the warrant last year. It was, it was number 24, and it passed 59 to 12. It's somewhat of a formality, I think, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't understand it better in years going out to see if we really do approach it. There's, someone asked about the schools, and there's a, when we vote on the school budget in June, you'll notice that it's not just one question, there's at least two questions there. And one of those questions is very similar to this, which allows you to go over whatever a state percentage increase limit is. So that's where the school portion of this gets taken care of. And I did have a question, Ruth. I mean, Ruth has put together some estimated tax rate calculation forms. Maybe that's where you were going to go. And one of the lines on there is maximum tax rate. And you give a minimum and a maximum, and maybe you could explain that, how those figures are calculated. And if the maximum tax rate that's on the overview sheet, which I don't believe is part of the town report, I think it's something that just the Budget Committee has in the board. Is that the same number we're talking about?
Yeah, on those tax sheets, the minimum tax is the, basically the minimum amount that you can tax and pay for what was approved at town meeting. The maximum amount is plus 5% of that.
For the overlay?
For the overlay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, or comments on Article 32 in the motion before you, which is to pass the article as written? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Oh, thank you. It does say right here, written ballot. Let's do a written ballot. I was just trying to move a little historic district ordinance to add to the Historic District Commission membership two associate members. The ordinance will now read, "The commission shall consist of five members as well as two associate members." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass the proposed amendment to the Historic District Commission ordinance. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 34. To see if the town will vote to accept as a townway Sand Hill Drive, Phase 2, as associated with the subdivision plan of Sylvester Woods. May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we accept Article 34 as written and accept as a townway Sand Hill Drive, Phase 2. Questions or comments?
Gary Lord, Pingham Brook Road. I'm also a member of the LLC for the development of this road.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? Oh, move it up a little. There you go. Get closer to them.
I just want to point out as a matter of reference that the road falls within the growth district, and it's gone through the stringent process, which had to be revisited because there wasn't many people who understood what the history was on, on building a road in Durham. So went through quite a bit of extra testing this time around, and I was told by the road commissioner that it's, some of this testing is actually more stringent than the main Department of Transportation requirements. Just wanted to point out, too, you know, obviously, accepting a road is accepting the fact that maintenance must be done on it. Prior to development, that parcel of property was about four years ago, I think we were paying around $1,000 in taxes. That's increased quite a bit since we've made a development. Over the past three years, over $20,000 of taxes have already been paid on undeveloped property. So there's already one house in there. Second one is being built at this time. There's 13 total lots in there that will be serviced by the road. I asked Sean if he could give me an idea of what the cost is on a yearly basis, and he, he really said he couldn't, other than make a statement that the, the expected maintenance on this road over the next 10 years or more would be minimal and only be plowing. As time goes on, roads will need some sort of repairs, as they always do. So I just wanted to make sure that we all understood where the road is and how it impacts the people in that area. And it's also an extension of Sand Hill Drive has already, the first phase has already been built. This is the extension in the final phase of the subdivision.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Yeah, I just really would advocate that we vote this down. A road, according to my understanding, it costs $3,500 a mile just for snow removal and winter maintenance. Then there's the regular maintenance. And yeah, for the next 10 years, maybe there's not a lot of maintenance on this road, so if the bill was to adopt it for 10 years, I'd say, yeah, sure. But we're taking this forever. We just told our longtime fire chief for $1,600 a year, if you don't like it, pack your bags. And now we want to take a road that's going to serve 13 families and cost us around $2,000 a year for the foreseeable future. I just don't understand why the town would want to take that kind of debt. We're running a business here, like it or not, and when you run a business, you have to do cost-benefit analysis. And the cost-benefit analysis says for the residents of this town, you're going to spend $2,000 a year. That's the cost, and the benefit is 13 residents get their road taken care of. I don't think that's a good investment. I don't know too many business people that would feel that way.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I disagree. I think it's a good investment. I think when we're trying to, we've approved the development, which means we want these houses, we want these families coming into town to increase the tax base, to share all of these expenses over. And having a town road is a benefit when you're buying a house, not having to deal with, you know, coming up with your own plowing contract for your, amongst your 12, 13 people. I'll tell you, I live in a subdivision with 12 houses on it, and it's a, it's a nightmare just getting the tax, you know, the hundred and something dollars of the tax money for the common land every year. I can't imagine trying to deal with, you know, maintenance on the roads, major maintenance on the road, down the road, or plowing or those things. I think it's benefit to the value of these houses and bringing in solid families to add this to the infrastructure of the town. I do have a question, though, because I was under the understanding, and maybe it's, the ordinance has changed, but had to have a certain number of the houses built before they could be considered for a town road? Is it, is it because it's an extension, or? Because I know on ours it was...
Do you have an answer to that? Is there a minimum number of houses required on a road before it can be approved by the committee and then presented to the town for final approval?
I don't, I don't know if there's a minimum for that. I think at one time, there was a minimum number for a school bus or a fire, something like that. I'm not so sure that it was for, for that. My only question or concern would be on this. I know in past years, when we've had developments, the town has said, you need to build the road at this kind of a spec, and if it meets all this stuff, we'll accept it. I don't know if that was said in this time or not. I don't really want to see the town getting into the business of accepting roads out there. I think long-term, they are going to cost us a lot more money than probably we'll get for taxes. But if this was part of that extension, and at one point was said, if you do it the way we tell you to, we'll accept it, that has to be taken into consideration. I don't... I don't, that's a fact of ours.
Particularly since an extension of an existing, because the first phase is a town road, correct?
But there may have been enough time lapsed that that may qualify at this point.
Jeff?
I do not, I'm not aware of any number of houses limits on accepting a road. This road is up for acceptance right now because they met the criteria of our ordinance, which is, number one, it to be in the southwest bend Growth District, which it is, and number two, that the road that was built meet a certain spec, which has, it was, the road committee in town met and has approved that they meet the qualifications. And at that point, we put it on to, for a town vote, and it's up to the town whether to accept it or not.
I think it, I think it makes sense. I think it adds, overall, to the value of those lots, and it helps the town overall over time, I think, particularly if they've built it to such a high standard.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Edward Nugent. I live on Sand Hill Drive. This one affects me, of course. But I think that it would be important to make it a town road, like the first part of it is, because, as was just stated, the homeowners that might want to purchase there would be, I think they'd be swayed if it wasn't going to be a town road. I know for me, it was a decision. And there will be a lot more revenue from taxes when they come in and build a house and get tax money for that. So, hopefully, it would offset the cost. And the road, as has been said, does meet a high standard, so I think it's, I think it's a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Speaking as a private citizen, not necessarily, because Budget Committee doesn't talk about this type of thing, but I do think that the road was built in good faith, based upon the standards that the town put out there, with the understanding that this is what you need to do to be accepted as a town road. And I also think, you know, someone brought up the business analogy, it's certainly not good business to do things that would make, not make, would make people not want to move to your town or build a development in your town, because, you know, you might do everything the town asks you to do, and then they still want to approve your road. So, I think there's been a good-faith effort here on the part of the developer, and that the tax revenue to come in from the houses that would be built in this development would far exceed the cost of plowing that road.
Thank you. Any other for comments, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion before you, which is to accept as a townway Sand Hill Drive Phase Two as associated with the subdivision plan of Sylvester Woods. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have a result? The result on Article 32 is, passes 65 to 16. I beg your pardon? 65, 16. Article 35, "To see if the town will authorize the selectmen to explore other means of voting in the town budget." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved by Mr. Wakeman. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded that we pass Article 35 as written. Jeff?
This article is in the warrant this year because the Board of Selectmen received a petition. The petition had enough signatures on it. It met the 10% of the last gubernatorial election. However, it was rather vague, and we were not able to come up with a, an article to actually enact anything at this point. So, instead, we put an article on here to authorize the selectmen to explore other towns, ways of voting. The petition was asking us to, after we had town meeting, about, between 30 and 45 days after, you have a referendum election on the articles as well. And so, that's why we put this on here, and this is one of the, one of the ones involved with the petition.
I circulated the petition...
Why don't you tell us who you are?
Oh, Donna Church from the old Brunswick Road. Okay. I circulated the petition, and it was vague to leave some room for working on it. What I didn't realize is it weren't supposed to be that vague. At this time, I'd like to take no action on Article 35 whatsoever, and because what the people signed is definitely not the interpretation of Article 35. So, at this point, I'm asking the town to take no action on Article 35.
Or vote against the motion.
Yes.
I think, I think what she was, what we're trying to, the way I take it on that was that the people are not here today, it either has to work, or we got a selectman that's actually, his wife is sick today and can't make it here today, and would like to have a chance to be able to vote on everything that's on, that we're voting on today. And we've got 119 people here, voting for, what, 3,000 or so of us? So, we're trying to make it so, open it up for everybody to have a chance to vote on, what we're voting for the town and where the money's going. I feel that's what we're just trying to do, and I encourage it. We got to do something to try to get more people to, get more input on how we spend our money.
Chuck?
It's one day a year. It's the same day every year. Just like last night, we had 171 people out of 3,000. Again, I mean, you see the same faces here every day, every year. Donna's here every year, Bob, Terry, it's Mr. Small there. It's the same faces every year. Everyone, it's not your right to vote, it's your obligation to vote, and you should take the time to go vote. It's the same way with meeting. In my opinion, if I'm looking out over this audience, what I'm seeing is, is I'm seeing about 100 people that care about what happens to their taxes and what happens to their town. The rest of the people, and, because I know that another 3,100 people, in my opinion, have found something better to do on a Saturday morning. And we have no way of debating or changing numbers if we're not all sitting here together. If somebody wants to sit there and say that they want to have a private vote on every one of these articles, I'm fine with that. But to sit here and not have the discussions with everybody, and everybody seeing it and hearing everyone's opinions, and just taking this book and going to a voting booth and vote on it, I don't think you can educate people.
Chuck? Donna?
Donna Church, the old Brunswick Road. On some of it, I agree with, but you can say that all you want, it's going to be the same people, same time, same place. Things are not going to change unless we change it, and that's what this is all about. We have to change the way we're doing things. And I'm not saying you take a book and not get educated first. You come here first, you do get educated, and hopefully, the ones that are here that are educated will pass the information along to others and encourage more to come at least to a voting booth. There are instances when, last year, I was in and out of here a lot, and I didn't get to vote, because there was all kinds of things that happened. I've had people give me their phone numbers and say, "I got to leave. I'm sorry, I can't be here any longer." I had another one just run out because her kid was sick. There, people actually have legitimate excuses, and every single vote, especially when it's this small, counts. It has to.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And then...
Wendy Stewart, Hollowell Road. I agree with Donna. My big issue is I don't feel that everyone has the right to know what I vote. I think it's personal. I don't think I should have to raise my hand and worry that others see how I feel or what I think, and I hope that we can do something different. Thank you.
Thank you.
I disagree with Donna on one thing. She wants to vote this article down and start over again or whatever. All right? I feel that, and I always have felt, that it costs nothing to put something on the floor and have a discussion. All right? If you approve this, you're not approving anything other than the fact of the selectmen finally getting a committee together or whatever and coming up with options. It costs nothing, but you get ideas on how things could be made better or more participation. But if you vote it down, then you're back to where you were, and Donna has to start all over again. And I applaud Donna for trying to do this, because I do know that she did bring it to the selectmen or a selectmen, and they would not put it on here without the petition. I think that's totally wrong, too. But it costs nothing. Have a committee and discuss these ideas. All right? If they don't fly, they don't fly. But what has it cost anybody? Nothing.
Thank you, Carrie. Yes, Donna?
Donna Church. The only reason why I'm suggesting to vote it down right now is I am looking at forming my own committee to do it. I don't want them choosing a committee, because sometimes I think I want to do it my own way with my own people and work it out differently. I've got a bunch of excuses, but I'm not going to say it, because it just, but anyway. It's not like I'm going to throw this baby out with the bathwater, going to try to start over again, and I don't want them forming a committee where I honestly have a real good grip on this, I got a real good idea, and putting it on paper didn't work well, but I can do it this time. So, that's why I was saying to vote it down.
Okay, Donna. Thank you. Mark, did you want to...
Well, I've been moving on at this point. I was just going to comment, and actually, I've talked with Donna about this at the store a couple times. Maybe actually, she talked to me about it. I'm not sure how it went, but one of my comments to Donna was, those 200-and-something people that signed this petition, I'm not, I don't see them. That was one of my concerns. That's one of my concerns about that information. And yeah, the people that get the information here can take it home and tell their neighbors. If you're looking at one side of that information, that's what you're going to tell your neighbors. That's the way it works. It ain't no different than we had RSU school committees, one wanted to get out, one didn't. The guys that want to get out that are pushing for that are going to tell you what I want you to hear, and the opposite side's going to do the same thing. That's why, come to the town meeting, you hear it all.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Mark, because I think people's bias will certainly direct them in what they tell other folks. And I think one of the potential issues with forming sort of your own group to study it is, I think it may lack credibility when you know it's all people from one side, whereas I hope we had some sort of sense of unbiased when you have a committee that has both sides represented and try to come to a consensus. I think you're right. The only thing it costs is time, people's time, if people are willing to volunteer and look, see if there's other ways to do this that might be better. I don't think anybody says that, you know, if you came up with a great idea, we wouldn't at least consider it. So, the idea of at least starting the conversation, it's not a bad idea.
Thank you. Kevin?
I would agree with what Michelle had to say. I think, I think we're much better served if the selectmen appoint a committee where they can solicit input from people that come at it from different points of view, and then bring an objective viewpoint to the town floor, so that we don't have just one group of people's solution as they see it that they want to bring to the town floor. Now, there's nothing to stop that group from still forming their committee and circulating a petition and trying to put that on the warrant next year. There's nothing to stop them from that at all. But I think the separate question is, what road would we want our elected selectmen to have in the process? And I think that we shouldn't just leave it to a small special interest group.
Thank you, Kevin.
Can I suggest when you appoint your committee or you ask for a committee, that you invite Donna and whoever she would like to join her? That would be awesome.
Absolutely. We would be putting it out in the, out in the open, asking for people to be on the committee. And with the interest that she has, I think we'd send a particular invitation to her to apply for the committee.
I think my biggest fear of changing things, I like the idea of changing. My concern is bottom line, because if it's set up in a manner that people are voting for or against something, and it fails after we went through all of this, then it costs the town more money to bring it back together. However, if they gave them options, A, B, and C, like Donna might be suggesting, that, you know, they have to choose something, and then we could get more opinions. Because I think, I really don't care what people think when I vote, because I'm voting in my opinion, but I know a lot of people are not as comfortable with that, and they may be swayed to vote a certain way because they're afraid their neighbor may think less of them or something. I don't know. But I think it's a good idea to explore those options, and I would hope Donna would want to be on that committee.
Thank you. Are we ready for the question? The question before you is, "To see if the town will authorize the selectmen to explore other means of voting in the town budget." All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, before we do our litany of mandatory, or not so mandatory, but mundane articles, I'd just like everyone to join with me and applaud our elected officials up here, because they have put in a lot of time. Okay, here we go. Article 36, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to carry and disperse grant funds from private state or federal agencies for the purpose so designated in each specific grant." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded under Article 36 that we pass the article as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 37, "To see what action the town will take in regard to fixing interest on delinquent taxes and establishing a date for interest to start taxes to be due and committed interest to start on all unpaid taxes days from the date of commitment. The interest in delinquent taxes shall be 7% per annum." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 37 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 37, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 38, "To see if the town will vote to leave the appointment of standing committee members and minor officials in the hands of the Board of Selectmen." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 38 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, all those opposed, the motion carries. Article 39, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of any town-owned property which they determine is no longer needed or usable by the town on such terms as they deem advisable." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 39 as written. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 40, "See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of real estate they're on on such terms as they deem advisable and to execute quick claim deeds they're on." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 40 as written. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion. All those opposed, the motion passes. All... Article 41, "To see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at 3% pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 41 as written. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 42, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax, or treasury, except payments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506." May I have a motion? Been moved and seconded under Article 42 that we pass the article as written. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion passes. Article 43, "To see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to resolve any disputes with parties having an interest adverse to that of the town which do not involve the expenditure of public funds or where there are sufficient funds in budgeted accounts to allow payment of any..." Is to be settled. May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded, we pass Article 43 as written. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 44, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed 4/12 of the budget amount in each category of the Town of Durham annual budget during the period from January 1, 2016 to the close of annual town meeting held in April 2016." May I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 44 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 45, "See if the town will vote to authorize the Treasury and Administration Assistant to borrow money on notes countersigned by at least three selectmen to pay for the operating costs of the town." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded, we pass Article 45 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries. And with that, the two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Durham is now adjourned. Thank you.[1750.48]